Good evening, everyone.
Hey Noah.
Hello.
Hey John, how are you?
I'm good, how are you Lisa?
Good, good.
Hi everyone. Hi Lisa, hi John, hi Noah.
Yeah.
Neil.
Toby, I like your background, that's how the weather feels right now.
Yeah, I had a rainy one too, but I thought, no, I think I'll maybe do some more fall, give us a little inspiration.
Alright, we'll just give it a couple of minutes obviously, and then we'll get going.
Do we, do we know if Commissioner Murphy's joining us today?
I believe she is, I have not heard that she's not.
Okay.
Yeah.
Coming through? Okay, good, thank you.
Hey Brittany, oh Commissioner Murphy.
Hello.
Hey Brittany.
Hey, hello Brittany.
Hello there.
Okay, it's six o'clock and we have everyone on, so we can go ahead and get started. Uh, can we, we'd like to call the meeting to order, can we get a roll call?
Commissioner Murphy?
Here.
Commissioner Moore?
Here.
Commissioner Savage?
Here.
Vice Chair Hancock?
Yeah.
Chair Lemus?
Here. Thank you. And then for the approval of the minutes, we have two, September nineteenth and October tenth. Um, are we all qualified to approve the minutes, or was there someone missing from any other meetings?
I was not in the meeting, but I did view the video of the session.
Okay.
I was missing on the tenth.
On the tenth, okay. Okay, so for the minutes of the September nineteenth, uh, does anyone want to make a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, September the nineteenth.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, okay. Uh, and then can we take a roll call on that?
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Savage?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hancock?
Yes.
Chair Lemus?
Yes. And then we'll go to the minutes of October second. Um, if there's no questions, does someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of October tenth.
Thank you. A second?
I'll second.
Uh, it looks like we have a question about the minutes of October second, so before we go into roll call, um, does Commissioner Murphy have questions on it?
Yes, my apologies, I got the two dates confused. I was not a part of the September nineteenth meeting, so if I could change mine to, um, to abstain.
I've changed that to abstain for Commissioner Murphy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then returning to October tenth, we have a first, um, and a second. I think, was it Neil, or, or... Was it Commissioner Savage at first?
I did the first.
You did the first, and then Commissioner, Vice Chair Hancock second, okay. So then can we get a roll call on the minutes of October second?
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Abstain.
Commissioner Savage?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hancock?
Yes.
Chair Lemus?
Yes. Okay, thank you. And then we'll move on to the next item, which is changes to the agenda. Have there been any changes to the agenda?
No changes, Chair Lemus.
Thank you. Uh, for the oral and written communications, um, I'm not sure if this pertains to the items received after the agenda was posted, or is it something different?
In Catari, we generally do treat them the same, uh, whether they're comments on the project that came in after the item was posted, or they're just a unique comment, not related to anything on the agenda.
Okay, so we did receive, um, well, the agenda was updated, we didn't receive it in our email, but I saw that today the agenda was updated with, um, different comments that came in after the agenda was posted. Um, did all the commissioners have a chance to review those, um, or does staff have any other input on that? Okay, Vice Chair Hancock?
Yes, um, I did review them, but they're actually quite difficult in this format, so I actually had to download each message. It wasn't possible to read it online, but I, I did end up doing it, and I'll, I'll reference them when we get to the particular items that, um, come up. So I think they were specifically about items on the, the, um, matters at hand.
I did not get a chance, nor did I get an email on those.
Yeah, I do not believe they were sent out by email. I think, uh, what happened, staff updated the agenda and included them in, and items after the agenda. Um, so staff, what do we do in that case when commissioners do not have an opportunity to review them?
Well, we will have, uh, we'll have senior, I'm sorry, Associate Planner, uh, bus summarize them, and we will provide them, and, uh, also allow the commissioners to a chance to review them. Um, we could take a moment during the meeting if the commission is comfortable, because it is important that the commission review all information pertaining to the decision before them.
That would be great.
Thank you. Um, so any other questions before we go to matters at hand? So, um, staff, would it be possible then to go through the item, and then after that, each item, read the comments that pertain to it, that we received, or what would be the best approach for that?
Autumn, are you prepared to do that?
Uh, would that be me reading the comments to the commission?
Or forwarding them, if they have access to their emails, so they could have a chance to take a look. I thought they had already been sent.
Okay, yeah, I thought that they had been sent as well. Um, there are four comments on the urban ag item, and five on the general plan progress report. Um, so I can take a minute to forward those right now. If you'd like me to do that, it'll take me a minute.
Yeah, please do. I think that's the best way for the commission to be able to get the information, especially in light of Vice Chair Hancock's comments, saying it was challenging to get them.
Okay.
So then we should probably, um, proceed with the, the first item, the urban agriculture ordinance, and meanwhile, um, Autumn will be sending the items for us to review?
Um, so the only problem is I'm delivering that staff report.
Oh, okay.
So, um, so if, that's what I meant. So if you, will need to wait for a few minutes for me to forward the emails.
Okay.
So, is that, is that, is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, let me take a few minutes, I'll do it as quickly as I can, there are kind of all...
Okay, thank you.
Let me see what I can do. Hey, I'm sorry, this is gonna take me more than a few minutes, because I don't actually have at my fingertips an, an email list for the planning commission. I'm, I will need, I'm looking for it in my emails right now, but it may take me a minute, so. Okay, so, uh, Carrie is gonna send them out? Would you like me to, uh, just proceed with this staff report?
Yes, and then what we'll do is, maybe if, if, uh, commissioners need a little time after to review the letters, uh, in reference to the presentation, then we'll take a little time after as well.
Okay, actually, hang on for just a minute, I, I may need to assist Carrie, I'll be...
Okay.
Okay. Our apologies about that. We were under the impression that the, uh, that those letters and all, those comments had all been forwarded to the planning commission earlier today, so I, I apologize. But they are en route now.
I did receive them, so I'm hoping other, other commissioners also receive them.
Yes, I just got them, thank you.
Thank you, Autumn. Commissioner Murphy? Commissioner Savage and Vice Chair Hancock, did you receive them? Yes?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, okay, so it looks...
Okay. Alright, we ready?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, okay, thank you. Um, so this first item we have for you here is an updated resolution regarding the potential zoning code amendment to the, um, to promote urban agriculture. Next slide, please. Um, so you may be wondering why this is back. Uh, so, uh, there's a little background on, uh, what brings us here with this item tonight. Um, in September, the, the, the planning commission held a public hearing and did make a recommendation to the city council, uh, recommending the adoption of this draft ordinance, um, related to urban agriculture, and included certain revisions, um, that were in the final resolution as adopted by the planning commission. Um, unfortunately, we subsequently discovered that there had been a piece missing from the item that went to the planning commission. Um, and that included the provision to allow, uh, certain land use, child daycare, uh, daycare centers with a use permit in the open space and recreation zoning district. Um, that was strictly through a clerical error, uh, on my part, and, um, it was not an intentional omission. That, that provision to include a daycare center as a potential use with a use permit in OSR, uh, has been part of the, the discussions, um, related to this urban agriculture item, uh, throughout all of the discussions, um, previous iterations of this draft ordinance, and, um, any meetings that have been just, you know, where there's been discussion. It's always been a provision that was included in there. Um, so the intent of tonight's item is to correct this omission through an updated resolution, which is really just addressing this single piece, uh, updating the land use table, uh, to include the child daycare, daycare center use in the OSR, uh, zoning district. Next slide, please. Um, just a little bit more about this particular issue. Um, so the goal of allowing the child daycare use in OSR, uh, is to allow youth educational programs at Veranda Faletti Ranch. Uh, that is youth in, um, all grades from pre-K, pre-kindergarten, all the way through twelfth grade. Um, the intent is not to actually operate a daycare center, but to be able to offer educational programs. And, uh, looking at the, the land uses that we have on the books, uh, this particular land use is the closest to, uh, getting us to where we would need to be to allow those kind of educational programs to happen, uh, at Veranda Faletti Ranch. Uh, so as I'd said, this, the proposal to include this piece has been included in all of the previous discussions in this year, uh, along with the tandem proposal, which is to rezone Veranda Faletti Ranch from neighborhood low density to open space recreation. Uh, the planning commission has supported both of those concepts in a previous version of the draft ordinance that came before you in March, uh, this year. And again, in September, supported the rezoning of Veranda Faletti Ranch, uh, to OSR. So the resolution that's attached to this item includes child daycare, daycare center as a revision to the draft ordinance, and also includes the revisions the planning commission, uh, approved at its September nineteenth meeting. Next slide. So with that, uh, we recommend that you hold a public hearing and consider an updated resolution recommending that the city council adopt an ordinance, amending the zoning code to facilitate local food production and urban agriculture. And I'm available to answer any questions you may have?
Thank you. Uh, do any of the commissioners, uh, have any questions for staff? Okay, so my understanding is that this item is only to look at the daycare center, um, addition to include it in the, in the, in the zoning code. Um, because when I reviewed the comments from, the public comments we received, there was a lot of different questions about other items that are not related to this. And so I'm not sure if that's something that would be at the city council, because, um, they're, they'll be approving the, the zoning code and the, and this process, the ordinance?
Um, so what staff is bringing forward is this one piece. However, my understanding is that the planning commission, if it wishes, may, um, have a broader discussion of the proposal. Um, you did, you passed a resolution, which is going to be, would be forwarded to the council tomorrow night, when they review the full ordinance to get, uh, from, you know, for the first time in this iteration. Um, but should the planning commission choose to make a different recommendation, uh, make any adjustments in what you're recommending, you, uh, are, you know, fully able to do that.
Okay. Okay, so I'm not sure if there's any questions from any of the commissioners, or else we can go to public comment.
So I think we have our hands raised.
Oh, there is? Oh, I don't see any hands. Oh, there it is, okay. So I see Vice Chair Hancock, uh, then Commissioner Moore, then Commissioner Savage. Okay, Vice Chair Hancock?
Well, Commissioner Moore had hers up first.
Oh, okay, thank you. I don't know how I missed that, so, uh, Commissioner Moore?
So I just had a question, um, so it, it, this doesn't preclude a daycare going there. It just, I mean, because that's what the zoning would be, so if, in the next couple... So if in the next couple of years, a daycare wanted to go in, it would be allowed.
Uh, so I think the important, the the.
Well, I just wanna, I just basically want a yes or no answer on that. Um, I I know all the other things around it, but. Bottom line, in the next couple of years, if a daycare wanted to go in, and it was a permitted use, would that be permitted?
Uh, that would be entirely up to the um, to the Planning Commission. Because uh, it would require a youth permit.
Okay.
And and the city council, because they would have to agree to the license agreement to allow childcare at the location.
Right, yeah, another thing that's really important to keep in mind is not only do we have a work plan with Farmster and Sandy Loam for. Uh, the uses of the site. Um, which, you know, which is as um, as Noah Sepp would govern that. There's also a conservation easement on the property, which uh, would not allow the operation of a daycare center.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Savage?
Yes, um, I believe this resolution includes changes that were brought up in the last meeting on September 19th. Are you able just to recap what those changes were? I think there were three or four.
Sure thing. Um, okay, so here's what, here's what. We we revised to the resolution and at, or the resolution passed on September 19th included the following. Uh, one was to specify that community garden rules. That relate to pesticides, herbicides, rodenticides, or synthetic fertilizers. Uh, use of those be stated in the management plan that the garden is required to submit to the city. Okay. Uh, the second is to require that produce stands and garden stands adhere to State of California. And County of Sonoma regulations related to safe retail food handling. And obtain a City of Cotati business license. Uh, and I actually want to add one um, update is that uh, subsequently. You know, it was brought to our attention that actually a business like, there is a business licensing exemption. For agricultural, for sales of agricultural products that are grown on site. So in this case, the business license would be moot for that particular, for that particular item. And then the third uh, change was to allow a certain section that allows sales of incidental items at produce stands. Okay, that was where there was a provision to allow up to 10% of non, you know, items not produced on site. To be sold there that were more commercial packaged items, and so that was, that was removed in the council, in the Planning Commission's recommendation. And so in the current version of the resolution that you you have tonight, there's a fourth revision, should you approve it. To add the child daycare daycare center as a land use with a use permit in OSR.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then Vice Chair Hancock?
Yes, hello, thank you. Um, so just wanted to confirm there, you're saying that for a business license. Or for for um, a property that is um, putting out a stand. For just items that were grown on their property, a business license wouldn't be required.
That's correct.
So great, good to hear that. Um, so the the other thing is, is just, why? Is this all in one large? Um, I'm just trying to understand all the different parts of this, but we've got, we've got everything from farming to um. The the urban agricultural standard to to everything to do with Falletti, the Falletti Ranch Park. It it's all, it's all wrapped up in one ordinance, resolution.
That's true. It's a lie.
I can speak to that, Chair Hancock. So uh, what you'll see in the general plan report that is coming as the next item. Is direction to rezone uh, Veranda Falletti Ranch. To allow operation of the demonstration farm. Um, because it's currently zoned residential, and so the city entered, was donated the property. With the condition that it be used as a demonstration farm to benefit the the community in perpetuity. So staff started looking at the mechanisms to allow that to happen. And we essentially had two options, either rezone it to parks, which is open space recreation. Or create an entire new land use category that exists nowhere else in the city, which would have been agriculture. So we uh, made the decision to rezone it open space recreation park. Uh, so it'll have the same zoning district as all the other parks in the city. It allows the operation of the demonstration farm. And then it also allows flexibility to be used for other things. Um, should the uh, the license agreement with Farmster or some future entity. Kind of begin to um, anticipate other things going on, such as childcare. Uh, supporting education that's gonna, that's already written into the license agreement. Separately, there was a direction in the general plan. To expand on uh, the allowable agricultural uses and support them throughout the city. And so staff saw two directions of policymaking in the general plan, trying to be efficient in our use. Put these things together, uh, at the direction also of the city council, which asked us to prioritize. Uh, the uh, supportive agriculture elements of the general plan. And put together an ordinance to make changes to allow more agricultural uses allowed in the city. For some reason, right now Cotati allows animal keeping, but not crop production in the zoning as a land use. Staff's not aware why, but so we're trying to respond to all those things. Hoping to push a lot of various policies across the line and get them uh, decided.
Thank you. So one last sort of uh, question, and possibly this will lead into a discussion later on. Um, I I certainly read the letters from Roy Smith and Cath and Jenny Blaker. Um, and and I certainly uh, think that the ordinances are very restrictive for home-based producers. Um, and particularly, I I I just want to ask a question about. The intent of having only two days a week. So so, I mean, for me, farming, and I do a little vegetable garden. I mean, you basically work with the seasons, you've got to work with, you know, and hopefully the rain and and other things, but. Primarily, it's the seasons and when things are happening, so. With the, this is saying that there's a restriction for just two days a week for putting out a farm stand, and I'm just wondering. Why was that phrase just two days of, I I can understand that we don't want a permanent one all the time there, but why two days a week? Only to sell for produce that might go, will go off. Um, especially organic produce versus just two days a week when you can't sell. So two. I mean, what was the intent and what's the disadvantages of just doing two days a week? Where you can't sell rather than two days a week when you can?
So um, the much of what is in the the proposed, the draft proposed ordinance right now is. Um, based on very specific feedback that the staff received from the city council at. Uh, workshop in June on this topic. And um. And before that, as you know, in March uh, this year, we had a previous iteration of the ordinance come forward. Um, and it had some provisions within it that were much more um, uh, uh. Open in terms of how many days a produce stand could operate and um. There was, there was quite a lot of input that the city council received uh, regarding concerns about neighborhood impacts. Uh, due to produce stands and garden stands of uh, in in the neighborhood, basically in residential zoning districts. And the the direction that the council gave to the staff in June was pretty clear that their. Their uh, concerns about neighborhood impacts led them to want to limit. The time and days of operation of produce stands. And that's reflected in this, in this draft ordinance. Um, you know, the concerns are related to traffic and um. Noise, visual impacts, you know, various impacts that might come from some sort of a business operation. In a residential neighborhood. And seeking to limit that is basically seeking to limit the impacts that might occur. To.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Savage?
Was there any conversation about making the limits based on hours of operation instead of days a week? Like they could operate 16 hours a week or something like that, that would give them more flexibility?
Uh, that actually did not come up. No. No, that's, that's an interesting option.
Thank you. And uh, Vice Chair Hancock, is that a new hand up, or is that the last one? Okay, so so my question on that is that, if I recall something about that, that we had brought up this before about. If we have it only for two days a week, the same thing that Vice Chair Hancock mentioned about some food, you know, might go bad or something if it's not sold. But within that week until the next time, but if I recall, maybe there could be some sort of collaboration with other farm stands. Where possibly. Some vegetable doesn't get sold or produce that doesn't get sold in one farm stand, they could collaborate with a neighbor or someone else that has a farm stand. Is that a possibility? Do you know? I'm just trying to see what other kind of options there might be.
Yes, and um. Yeah, and and so that would be an option because what happens is that um, you know, there is an option in this ordinance for. Adjacent properties to, you know, to place their produce for sale at a market stand. And so, you know, if a neighbor has produce and it's not their day to operate a stand, or they don't want to operate a stand, their produce is going bad. You know, conceivably, if they have a nearby neighbor who is operating a market stand, then they could, or a garden stand, that they could go and bring their produce there. Um, there's also been, you know, discussion about having some kind of a produce stand at Veranda Falletti Ranch that would be some kind of a. Kind of a clearing house, if you will, for for produce grown within the neighborhoods uh, in town. That could be brought to the ranch to to be sold at the farmer's market there, kind of an aggregator.
Yeah, that would be good as this develops to have other options, so that, you know, I would hate for food to go bad, you know, this is a a good project. And um, that would be good to look at those ideas. And one other question that I saw, uh, based on some of the comments that we got, is the um, the hours for mechanized equipment. So. I know some people work nine to five, so they might need to do a little work after, so does that mean? What's the definition of mechanized equipment? Is that like large tractors, or is that like? Weed, like weed eaters kind of small equipment, or is there kind of a definition that delineates mechanized equipment versus? Smaller equipment that may not be as as impactful in the community?
Well, so what what is in the the draft ordinance right now is mechanized equipment is um, is allowed. As long as it's what you might typically find on a residential property. Okay, so, you know. Presumably that relates to, you know, light equipment, um, you know, weed whackers, um. You know. Head trimmers, I don't know exactly what mechanized equipment you would actually end up using actually in that, in that application. My mind goes directly to leaf blowers, obviously, but hopefully they won't be using very many of those. But that, you know, because of the resident, the residential stipulation there, that would rule out tractors. You know, or, you know, large earth moving equipment, uh, could allow rototillers. Potentially, and um, you know, the. That I think would be probably the largest piece of equipment you would have, and obviously rototiller is not going to be used all the time, and that's, but that. But then there's also the hours limitation as well to further mitigate any potential, you know, impacts. From mechanized equipment.
So so like a weed whacker or a leaf blower could only be used until five o'clock um, during weekdays?
Was related to the um, related to the gardening use, yeah.
Um, I think someone had mentioned, sometimes people use those type of equipment even after five o'clock on a regular residential.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and I will say that um, the the discussion about the use of mechanical equipment and potential noise. Was a, was a lively discussion um, in front of the council. Both in March and at the June 30th workshop. And um, the the hours limitation and the limitation to equipment you would only find in a residential application is. Directly a result of uh, feedback that we got from council members.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that. Okay, so um, if no other commissioners have any questions, we'll go to public comment.
To our attendees tonight, please use the raise hand icon to speak, or if you're dialing in, use star nine. Jenny Blaker, go ahead.
I understand the main reason this has come back to you this evening is because of the language about the daycare center being left out. And although daycare center seems rather strange. A rather strange term to use, it seems that that is what is essential. For allowing the educational programs and opportunities for children. To have hands-on experience, learning about and working with plants and animals. And that without that wording, the ranch would li- lose a lot of the potential. That it has as a valuable resource for Cotati. Uh, and neighboring communities, schools, and other groups. I understand like Sandy Loam, um, which is using it now, would need to have this language in there. I I assume it would, um, to be allowed to go on doing what they're already doing, so I certainly hope that. Uh, the language will be approved to um, allow and promote educational programs for children and other people too. Um, that seems essential, so um. And then I don't know if it's too late to comment at this point. Um, when you've already, it's, there's already been so many discussions, but. Just reading through it all again, it seems to me that this is incredibly restrictive. And um, doesn't really facilitate local food production, but puts up all kinds of obstacles to people. Who want to grow and sell food, whether it's, you know, kids selling extra fruit or eggs or something. Um, on a little table outside their house during the summer. Or somebody really seriously trying to set up a market gardening or community-supported agriculture project on a bigger scale. For example, um, saying that a market garden can only be half an acre, that seems incredibly small, the setbacks. Uh, seem to be unnecessary and difficult to work around. Um, the garden stands only being allowed for two days a week, um, that just seems. Crazy if the point is that people should be able to grow and sell fresh foods to their neighbors. Um, and also the fees and permits, I'm glad to hear. That um, they wouldn't need a business license, but it just seems that all the requirements are being piled on. And making it very difficult for for anyone who's trying to seriously do this. Um, and I was interested to see that there were farmers who made the same comments in a more detailed way than I have. Um, I just happened to trying to be, imagine what it must be like and. And um, how difficult it would be to fit in with all these requirements, so. I I I just think this is making it very difficult for anyone who wants to grow and sell. Local food, and it would be such an asset if people could. Thank you very much.
Lori and Barbara, go ahead.
Thank you, um, I, my comments are very similar to Jenny's. I um, feel very supportive of. Uh, moving forward with whatever's needed to allow for educational programs for children to happen. At the Veranda Falletti Ranch, um, but I. And again, as she said, I don't know if it's too late for all of this, but in reading. The. The comments and things, I I'm also dismayed, I feel like the ordinance isn't really trying to promote agriculture in Cotati. It's trying to make it so hard that it looks like we're saying it's okay, but it's not really. Uh, the the two-day-a-week thing, I mean, a- as a consumer, I would also be like, oh, is that? Open today? Is it Tuesday, or were they open on, wait, which two days can they be open? Uh, you know, so even from the consumer standpoint, I think that's. Sort of, you know, could be challenging, but for the farmer, I think two days a week seems unreasonably uh, limiting. Um, and you know, just to, some of your, like. If somebody is a farmer, then maybe they can find some other farmer whose stand is open a different day, and how does that benefit the community? If there's actually stands open, you know, if they're close enough to each other, it's like, oh, well, you might as well just let somebody be. Open, I I just have this feeling the city is not going to be overrun with farm stands and so much. Business and traffic that it's actually going to be problematic, maybe I'm wrong. About that, uh, maybe, but in any case, it seems very restrictive, mo- many aspects of it, so um. I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much for your time. But in any case, it seems very restrictive, mo- many aspects of it. So um, I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much for your time.
Chair Lemus, settle in public comment.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, so now I'll go back to the commission to see if there's any final questions. Um, and I don't know with the ordinance, if there's a resolution. I didn't see a resolution or anything, or is it just for us to just agree on ordinance? I'm trying to see what the action item is for this.
The, the action is a, a resolution and it reads um, very much like the resolution that the commission approved on September nineteenth with the addition of those um, revisions that uh, that Commissioner Savage asked about, which I mentioned earlier, and I can reiterate those if you want. But the, the resolution is in the, is in the packet. And if I may, Chair Lemus, I want to, um, I want to just bring one uh, additional um, item to, or not item, but I want to make one more comment to the council, I'm sorry, commission. Um, so related to, you did have some discussion um, on September nineteenth about the two days a week and the limitation there. Um, and rather than include a direct recommendation to the council on that topic, I want, you did make a request to them to have some discussion at their meeting tomorrow night. And I, um, if you'd like, I can read to you what I put in the staff report related to that. Would that be helpful? So the commission can be reminded of what, what you asked the, the council to do.
Sure, that would be good.
Um, okay, so the staff report says, "The planning commission requested that the city council consider whether the two-day-per-week limitation on garden stands is appropriate in light of the possibility that seasonal produce is often ready for harvest on a more frequent basis and should be sold shortly after harvest. The commissioners felt that allowing garden stands to operate more days per week would allow produce to be sold when it is fresh and reduce the loss of produce that does not store well." Alright, so tomorrow, so that's part of the report going to the council uh, tomorrow night is I'm asking them to, to look at that again.
Thank you. Yeah, no, we had discussed it, so that's good that they'll be receiving that information. Uh, so Commissioner Savage?
Uh, I just have one question. When I listened to the uh, video of this discussion on the nineteenth of September, I thought that there is a process if someone wants to operate a more full-service market stand, that they can apply for that process. It's a larger market stand and, and has different um, uh, restrictions or, or processes around it, and that this is more geared towards a hobbyist type of a garden. It is gardener, is that correct?
That is, you're correct in that, yes, there is a different, um, there is a different option available. It's what we call the produce stand. So in the, in the residential neighborhoods, in all the residential neighborhoods, it's proposed that one could have a market garden and accessory to that, a garden stand, okay, with a two-day-a-week limitation. In the RR rural residential zone currently, one can operate a larger-scale farming operation, which we call crop production, has fewer limitations, and one can also, and that's with a use permit, and one can also operate a produce stand and with a use permit. And you're correct that that is, um, the size limitation is, is less restrictive. It's a four hundred square foot limit and there are no limitations on days and hours of operation for a produce.
So if an individual has needs for that type of a facility, they're able to go to take advantage of that?
Yes, if they're in the rural residential zone.
Okay, okay.
And further, this proposal does, um, you know, the draft ordinance does include a provision to extend that to the RVL, the Residential Very Low District as well. And I, and I do think that just related to the half-acre limitation and size on a market garden, um, you know, one thing that is likely is that where one might have a market garden in those uh, more dense residential neighborhoods, one would be less likely to run into the half-acre size limitation becoming a problem. Um, and if one were in the RR or RVL zones, one might have a larger property and then they might choose the crop production option instead without the half-acre limitation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have questions? Uh, Vice Chair Hancock?
Yes, not a, a question at all, but I think we're in the discussion phase of this, if that's okay. Um, I mean, I definitely support the aspect of the inclusion that's in here for, for childhood education. And I, and I, I do really appreciate that um, we're putting forward again, or it'll be in the staff, in the report to tomorrow's council about the two-day-a-week. I, I certainly see that something like this is that combination of somebody who might have a hobby, but really they're trying to learn what it's about. And so I think, you know, the critical thing is, is that two-day-a-week is just so restrictive um, for, for, you know, if you did manage to produce something, you're not going to be standing out there on the stand and it'll be very vulnerable, you know, to a good neighborhood. So um, I really would hope that the council would look at that and um, just, I think about it and we've got that in writing. So I'm um, unfortunately not very happy overall, but um, it is the way it is. And I have been through a lot of the discussions and it's, at times I don't really feel very comfortable with this being Katari, but that's what has been put in writing. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Savage?
Would it be appropriate for us to revise that and have a more specific recommendation? As opposed to just say, we think you need to reconsider?
You mean the other items that we discussed?
Well, just the hours of operation.
Oh, the hours of operation. It sounds like that was a kind of uh, discussed at the city council uh, level. And that's kind of what they, kind of, as a, kind of a final hour of operation, they came up with after public comment. But one of my requests is if we can send the public comments that we received today, the, the items that came in after the agenda was posted to the city council, so they can receive the same information that we received, if that would be helpful. Um, could, could staff forward that to the city council?
Yeah, they've been forwarded, yeah. And based on our snafu tonight, I'll, I'll double check. But yes, we did forward on all of the comments, we received on all of, of tonight's um, items with the general plan item as well. We forwarded all of the, those onto the commission, or the council and vice versa. So we did get some uh, comments to the council that we sent to, to you as well, to the commission.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so it sounds like what we have right now, there has been robust discussion at the city council. So you know, as far as the, the mechanized equipment, the hours of operation, um, all these different items that we've been discussing that the public has brought up. So that would be good to send that over to them. So our next step then is um, uh, the resolution, uh, getting um, who wants to make a motion and read the resolution and, and a second and, and forwarding, forwarding this to the city council for tomorrow's meeting. Does someone want to make um, a, a motion under resolution?
I'll make a motion uh, for the resolution of the planning commission of the city of Katari, recommending that the city council adopt amendments to Title seventeen land use of the Katari municipal code to support urban agriculture by amending Title seventeen land use, by amending section seventeen twenty-two oh-two oh, a lot of land use, parking and loading, number of parking spaces, animal keeping, outdoor displays and sales, residential accessory uses and structures, application preparation and filing, limited termit permits, notice of hearing and definitions, adding the section on community gardens and market gardens and urban agricultural standards. And changing the zoning of the one seventy-five West Sierra Avenue, um, Veronda Falletti Ranch property from neighborhood locality to open space recreational.
Thank you. Does someone want a second motion?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. And then can we get a roll call vote?
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Savage?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hancock?
Yes.
Chair Lemus?
Yes. Thank you. That passes on a five zero. Okay, so the next item that we're going to is the general plan annual progress report.
Thank you. Okay, good. Alright, so um, we will be providing a report to the commission on um, on our annual progress reports for two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-one on im- uh, progress and implementation of the general plan goals. Next slide, please. So as, as the commissioners know, the uh, the general plan is uh, a document that identifies the city's vision for the future and provides a framework for decision-making. And our current general plan was adopted in two thousand fifteen. Um, so, and you also know that um, annual progress reports on the housing element of the general plan ha- have been required there on an annual basis sent into the state for many years. That's been a requirement. Uh, this is a new requirement for uh, reports on the remainder of the general plan. Uh, the first year that the state requires an APR, uh, annual progress report uh, for all of the other general plan elements, starting in two thousand nineteen. Um, and essentially, the, the state views the, this APR as a tool for the local jurisdiction's use. Uh, it's a status report to inform city leaders and community members about progress towards the goals um, in the general plan and to guide decisions that the city may be making on work plans and budgets. Uh, for example, the capital improvement program, uh, program or CIP uh, might be informed by uh, a report like this about how we're doing on the general plan goals. Um, so the, the current uh, APRs that we are bringing to you are for three calendar years, two thousand nineteen, twenty and twenty-one, uh, combined into two reports and it will be submitting to the state. In the future, the APRs will be submitted on an annual basis in spring of each year, based on a calendar year. Okay, next slide. So the, the elements of the general plan that are not the housing element, um, are quite a few. They include the circulation element, community health and wellness, community services and facilities, conservation, economic vitality, land use, noise, open space and safety. And within each of those elements, uh, there are a number of goals and within those goals, there are objectives, policies and actions. Um, and if you've seen this, you know, if you look at this report, it includes the implementation plan where all of those actions are compiled in one place and you can see that there's quite a few of them that are these actionable items in the general plan that we're meant to be pursuing as we can um, over the life of the general plan. Uh, and we're using that implementation plan, uh, which appears in the back of the general plan document itself as the format for our APRs. Uh, our department, Community Development, gathered information from all the other city departments on progress on each action within the implementation plan during those three years, uh, to inform this report. Okay, next slide, please. So within the uh, the implementation plan, uh, for the general plan, there are really two primary types of actions. And you'll notice that in going through the report, that you have your ongoing actions, which might be things like services that the city provides, uh, maintenance, uh, partnerships that we maintain uh, with other agencies, uh, data collection activities. Those are all examples of some of our ongoing actions. Uh, we also have the project-oriented actions, including capital improvements, new program development and completion of code updates and policy updates. There are also some of the goals, uh, or some of the actions within the, the plan that are kind of a hybrid of these two. Uh, the level of specificity, specificity and complexity of the different actions varies quite a bit. Um, and uh, sad to say, you know, COVID has really impacted the city's progress on uh, the implementation of these action items over the past uh, few years. You know, work has been suspended on uh, and then resources have been reallocated in some cases, and so that has slowed us down somewhat. And we see that, that in the report. Um, what are we going to do with this report? Uh, following the planning commission and city council review, we're going to uh, submit these reports to the state office of planning and research. And we'll probably start on the twenty-two report, twenty-twenty-two report almost immediately. Um, okay, next slide. So uh, we recommend that uh, the planning commission receive uh, this report from us on the annual progress reports on general plan implementation for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one. And we are available to answer questions related to the reports. Um, I will note that uh, we don't have all of the department heads here tonight, so um, we'll do our best to answer questions you might have about specific items, uh, action items in the report. Um, we may need to get back to you if we need to um, check in with other departments to actually get, get answers for you. We may need to come back with that, but we will do our best.
Thank you. And for this item as well, we received about five um, uh, public comments, uh, items after the agenda. So, and those were forwarded to the commissioners, so hopefully people had an opportunity to receive them. Um, so we'll go to questions from the commission. I saw uh, Vice Chair Hancock's hand up. Go ahead.
Yes, hello, thank you. I was trying not to be forward on there, but I have spent quite a bit of time on this. I mean, I really appreciate that we're, that the city is putting this out and being requested to do or required to do it by the state and stuff. But I think it's a, a very useful um, tool to do that. Um, and obviously, you know, there's a, there's a lot of work in here that is impossible, well, it's just amazing to read through it all. But I, I have one difficult area that I, I want to ask questions about, and that's to do with the circulation and with some of the activities in the plan. So we, we are here on a planning commission forward looking. We do have a bicycle, pedestrian and bicycle um, aspect to it. So um, a- and you know, this is questions that have been raised by, I guess, people writing in Linda Paget, who raised issues very succinctly about the sequencing of the work with the general plan. Um, Jamie Zemel, who would like, like to see the BMP updated. Jenny Blaker, who had some good maps of potential connections. Um, Deborah Hammond, who had a personal story about walking out there. So um, I have this very specific question that we have a context that we're operating in of Sonoma County and also what's going on in Katari, um, with the West Katari connection. And we have a approved now design for the West Katari interface with Highway one-one-six. But we don't have anything within that area that has been defined as a potential walking. Now, walking connections. So I understand that there is requirements by the state to do upgrades, which would be along Highway one-one-six, but at some point that design has to go for a um, review by Caltrans and it's just will potential pedestrian crossings, which we don't have identified in writing, um, be something that's part of a review. So the city council has declared a climate emergency resolution. It doesn't appear in this general plan. Quite uh, obviously, we have done other work in these areas. So my, my question to staff is for this area of really trying to make Katari or make future parts of Katari for the northwest section, how does the process proceed with identifying um, elements of walkability and particularly how to, that, that Highway one-one-six, how can that be crossed? Um, and if we have senior living, which we approved in two thousand and nineteen on that side, how do we make it safe for people to be able to move into the West Katari avenues? How do we visualize this? How do we put in plans something that might be able to uh, be uh, um, recorded by Caltrans when there's a review? So that's my, sorry for the very long question, but I did put this question to staff beforehand um, in a, hopefully a more succinct form.
Yeah, I'm happy to, to jump in on this because it touches on multiple elements. So, uh, Chair Hancock, you're absolutely correct that um, the general plan and the bicycle pedestrian master plan, which ideally are in alignment and the bicycle pedestrian master plan informs the circulation element, they're out of sync. And that we, the city had previously last done their bike and pad plan the year before they updated the general plan. And for some reason, uh, the general plan update did not fold in all of the bike and pad master plan elements. That being said, uh, the, the city has street standards that live in a different document, but I'll, I'll have it to share it in the future of the public work design manual. So that shows all the different um, street sections, which means, you know, sidewalk, planter strip, bike lane, travel lane, center lane, that's a half width development standard for all different types of streets. And then the zoning code says what types of streets are most appropriate and what types of zoning districts. So to answer your question, when a private development project comes forward, we do have ways to determine what type of frontage that private development we do have ways to determine what type of frontage that private development has to build in order to build out the pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure in addition to the roadway. And that's based on the street standards that we've already designed, and those live in the engineering standards. And then the zoning code, which says which of those standards is appropriate for what zoning districts. And it's based on the amount of traffic that's anticipated in neighborhood, urban, residential versus, you know, Grabbinstein Highway is a commercial district. So there's that portion of it whereby private development has mandates put on them based on the type of project, their location, informed by the zoning and public work standards. Then we have a separate bigger picture process, which I think is what you're you're referencing with regards to the contract that the city council just authorized to design what the frontage improvements of Highway one sixteen is going to look like from Redwood Row, I'm sorry, Redwood Drive to Alder Avenue. Because I think you rightly are identifying that that's a very unique street section that our current standards may not correctly address or adequately cover all the various competing needs. And so that contract's been approved. Fair and Peers is a very, very well respected traffic engineering firm. They will be designing the frontage of what those streets will, or that section will be required to build out, whether the city does it as a as a public project or whether private development projects build it out as a part of their development.
So my question specifically is not about what's already there, but about what could be there if we if we if we provide the pedestrian linkages. Pedestrians travel in routes. So it would be from West Qatati Avenue to some of those routes in Hellman Lane. So how do we capture that to inform this junction design?
Well, I think if we think about, okay, what street types would be built in all of those different areas, we could envision what type of bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure would be required should a private developer build them. And then similarly, if we were to do it as a public project, we would go through a public process to gather input on what's necessary, and it would be informed by those existing policies and designs we have. But the missing piece, which I think you're getting to, is the bicycle pedestrian master plan, which tries to connect the regional pathways, how they would enter and exit Qatati and ensure that our internal circulation gets people to those locations.
Thank you.
And let's see, who was next? Oh, Commissioner Murphy?
Yes, maybe somewhat in of a similar type comment, but I just wanted to connect the dots between the proposal here for the general plan, annual progress reports. And then from what I was able to quickly read from the public comment, I think all of the public comment I saw was related to pedestrian and bicycle plans. And so I was curious how how or if we'll be able to connect the two between these progress reports and updates, where we'll see that connection with the pedestrian and bicycle plan.
Well, I'll take this too. I think some of the frustration from the comments that is that's coming forward is just the city's lack of progress on bicycle and pedestrian master plan update. So we committed to doing this in two thousand nineteen, and then we've just frankly struggled to get traction and and capacity. We were thinking of doing in-house with no funding. I think in the early, early times, maybe that was twenty twenty. Then obviously, we've had a few other shifts and priorities since then. But now the city council put funding in the current fiscal year budget, so that's twenty two, twenty three. So we're almost halfway through that fiscal year. And the last time this plan was done in two thousand fourteen, the Sonoma County Transit Authority, SCTA, and the county essentially did the plan for the city. The city had minimal to zero outlay of funds and essentially was able to participate in a wider regional process that was being undertaken, I think because a grant was received. We are now in a timeframe where SCTA is starting that process again. And so while we do have some funding, we feel that it was or it is appropriate to join in their process again to basically magnify the money that we have now to to leverage this broader process and also to ensure that the current city focus also has that regional perspective and connectivity. Because I think as Vice Chair Hancock has pointed out, in order to really get people out of their cars, you have to provide a circulation network that's both internal to the city, but then has connections outside to where people may want to go to other communities that surround us.
Okay, so so am I right then to assume that the progress reports that we see will will comment on things that, of course, will affect the pedestrian and bicycle plan? And then moving forward, we may see more information about that as we kind of dive into it a little bit more aggressively in the future? Am I understanding that right?
That's correct. So if you look at the elements related to public works in the capital improvement program that are in the report, it shows some of the things that were identified as priorities and then that were built out. This new bike and ped master plan will have a whole new list of projects that then Public Works will incorporate into their CIP as budget is available and start to build those out. And then I think, I keep pointing at Chair Hancock, but he's because he's very thoughtfully commented, city will also look for opportunities to connect to those more regional trail opportunities in the surrounding areas.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Moore?
Yes, so my comments are on page one oh two, and it's about having some kind of historic districts in Qatati. And for me, I I'm glad that this is, I saw this and it's in progress. I know we saved the building up at Kessing Ranch, and I see other historical buildings in Qatati that I just think this is an important part of our heritage here is not only knowing these buildings, but preserving them in the long run. So I look forward for this being more in progress, where it's just maybe not just an incentive, but an historical district or historical naming of buildings. I know there's one that has a metal facing that is very original down by, I think it's Sweet Peas, and not a lot of people know about. Anyways, I mean, I think this is more, when I look at Petaluma, they've preserved a lot of their buildings in Petaluma over the years. And and I'm hoping that we progress in that. But those are just my comments on this.
Okay, thank you. So and and I and I saw that when I was looking at the general plan, that you do have the ongoing, you have things that are complete, and then you have in progress, and then you have priority A and B. Is there a way to put timelines or anything on here? I know that, you know, there's so many different items, and they're all in different states, and and the the plan is more of a larger plan, so this is just looking at one or one year at a time. But is there a way or is there a need for some of these items that we can put some sort of a timeline or date or something on it?
Yeah, so that's an excellent question, and and I think it's worth noting for both the the members of the public that are here and the commissioners. So while we have this very comprehensive list, kind of a to-do list of things necessary to implement the full vision of the general plan, which is a twenty year vision. Every year, we meet with the city council on their goal setting, right? And and they tell us what their goals should be for allocating staff resources and funding for the next fiscal year. And so those staff typically meets internally to start assessing where we've been, what we've accomplished, and then also what we know we need to do as a part of maybe state mandates or some other needs that have arisen. And we start to present that to the city council through goal setting in late winter, early springtime. So I would just encourage everyone here to think about their priority list, talk to their council members, show up to meetings, speak publicly, write letters or comments to us to help inform what our priorities should be for the next fiscal year. And then to your point, Chair Lemus, that will help us tie timelines to certain of these projects. The council has considered going to a two-year budget. If that were to occur, then we could expand that timeline out from a single fiscal year to potentially two and allow kind of more comprehensive perspectives on how some of the funding gets allocated, hopefully to get some of these things accomplished.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. So we'll go to public comment now and see if there's any comments from the public.
To our attendees tonight, please use the raise hand icon to speak, or if you're dialing in, use star nine. Jenny Blaker, go ahead.
Thank you. I have a T-shirt that says, "Think globally, act Qatati." And tonight is an opportunity for the planning commission to do just that, both in terms of the food and ag ordinance and also this one. As per the letter which I submitted yesterday, the bike plan and the general plan and the county bike plan need to be in sync so that there's more than just the bare legally required minimum in terms of pedestrian and bicycle access when you're looking at things like working with Caltrans on Highway one sixteen. Locally, the main Laguna Trail through Qatati is very well used and very much appreciated, especially during the early days of the pandemic, pandemic, when the gyms were closed and even the parks were closed for a while, everyone seemed to be out on the trail. The signage problem, the signage project has been very helpful in letting people know about connections between one point and another. I have met people who live one side of East Qatati and didn't know that there were trails on the other side. Well, there's a similar network of trails in northwest Qatati that very few people seem to know about because Highway one sixteen forms such a barrier to get out there. These are the trails on the Water Agency Access Roads along the Laguna, Gossage Creek and Washoe Creek, and they they are or could be another fabulous resource for local people who like to walk and bicycle, including with children, on quiet, safe trails away from vehicle traffic. But how do you get there with Highway one oh one and Highway one sixteen acting as such effective barriers to non-motorized traffic? There is also, as you pointed out earlier, a network of trails that has the potential to connect at a regional level along the Laguna to Sebastopol and then to the West County Trail to Forestville and so on. And all of this is on the county bike map, but not on the Qatati bike map. So we need to be thinking both big picture and locally about how to make these kinds of pedestrian and bicycle routes connected and accessible and to have the plans in place so that Caltrans, for example, can be, can know what Qatati's plans and intentions are. I also wanted to just point out that the trails are not only a geographical connector to help people get from place to place on foot or by bicycle, but they're also an incredible social opportunity. I'm forever bumping into people I know, friends, acquaintances, or even starting conversations with I don't, with people I don't know on the Laguna Trail. And it would be great to see more of that kind of happening along those trails in the northwest quadrant of Qatati as well. So just encourage you to to continue to work on the bike ped master plan and getting all these plans aligned so that we can get the grants and do the work and everything to get that work done on the ground. Thank you very much.
Eris Weaver, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Eris Weaver, I'm a longtime Qatati resident and executive director of the Sonoma County Bicycle Coalition. I realize that tonight's meeting was receiving a report and doesn't have any action about forward plans. But I did want to just check in about all the different intersecting plans with sort of an observation and a question. First is, I was very delighted in in two thousand twenty when I first heard from staff that the city was looking at doing an update on the bike plan, master plan internally. And I actually offered to work with the city pro bono on helping make that happen, which obviously has not moved forward. And in in staff's comments earlier, it wasn't a hundred percent clear to me, but it sounds like you're going to just participate in the overall countywide plan along with SCTA. Now, I know that they're just barely getting started on that. I don't think the timeline for completion for that is until two thousand twenty four. One of the reasons that I've been very encouraging jurisdictions to get that plan done sooner rather than later is, as we all know, projects have to be in the plan in order to get certain pockets of funding. And the standard and the different types of bike facilities that are out there have changed in the years since that last plan was made. For example, a class four protected bike paths were not a thing when the old bike and ped plans were made. So it's important to get those things updated. I'm also really wondering, when is the overall city general plan supposed to be updated? And hoping that we don't get into the same thing that was mentioned about having happened before, where one plan got done, the other plan got done, but the earlier one didn't get incorporated. I know right now Petaluma is working also with Fair and Peers on both their active transportation plan and their general plan updates simultaneously so that they feed into each other. And that could be a really useful way to go too, to get some economies of working on two things at once, but also that they're all consistent with each other. And I have lots of other thoughts about all the other paths and things, but I'll save those for another time. Thank you.
Chair Lemus, that will end public comment.
Thank you. So I'll bring it back to the commission for any questions or discussion of the commission we have. Vice Chair Hancock?
Hey, I hate to go again first, but I am, again, I just want to, you know, itemize or list what I've heard up on the 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 year that's come up. That there's for this junction, there was a two million dollar budget or two billion dollar grant that was received, a line item, I think, and that's fantastic. I mean, it's great staff are actually doing, you know, making this effort or finding these opportunities to do it. And obviously, that was a purchase, a purchase of a piece of land. But I just see that, and the new projected budget for this junction is five million dollars. So I mean, I do appreciate staff's view on this and that they, it has slipped. I still don't understand why we had an announced plan in two thousand twenty one that just then couldn't be implemented. I mean, there was obviously something going forward, but I, you know, here we are now at the end of two thousand twenty two, and hopefully this will go forward. But this will be a junction that is seven million dollars when it's actually of of money that's spent. And I just don't feel that there will be a clear reference or a clear input to Caltrans. And I mean, we're making comments here, public have made comments, they've made comments in two previous meetings as well. So how does this actually get incorporated in a way that Caltrans will pay attention to it? That's what I'm not hearing. And that's when I spoke to Caltrans in two thousand and nineteen, that's what they basically said, is that it's got to be documented direction, either city ordinances or city resolutions, not planning commission resolutions. But so so that's my comment. I mean, I appreciate the opportunity here that staff is putting this forward, and I think I think we're making this work by commenting on this, this one aspect that is not very visible. I definitely support Lisa Moore's aspect of of the historical side. It's really nice to have a little bit of history. And I know the Qatati Historical Society has been active. I recently met one of the the active people in that, so it's nice to see. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Any other commissioners have any discussion or questions? Okay, so I don't believe that there's an action item on this. Is there anything staff wants to do other than just receive the report?
No, all you need to do is receive it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now the next items, reports by staff?
Thank you, Chair Lemus. Just quickly, tomorrow's election day, so please everyone go vote. We have some changes coming to the city council as two longtime incumbents are stepping down, not running for election. And our Chair Lemus will be elevated to the city council. And our Chair Lemus will be elevated to the city council in the very near term. So congratulations on that.
Thank you.
So there's a, you know, Chair, Vice Chair Hancock will be stepping into that role. And then the commission will be asked to vote on a new chair and vice chair. I think it's at the first meeting following that ascension or changes of the council, but also maybe after appointment. So we will be needing a new planning commissioner. So please encourage interest and talk to folks out there to apply. There is an application available online from the city clerk.
Is the application process already open for the vacancies or the vacancy that will be coming?
I'm not sure if it's open yet or not, but I can find out and we'll find, we'll get it going. I imagine it will be on the next couple of weeks if it's not currently.
Thank you.
But then I just also want to point out, we are going back to in-person meetings. So city council has voted to do that. So starting in December, or I'm sorry, in November, the first, the second meeting of November, I'm sorry, two weeks from today will be our last Zoom planning commission meeting because the city council has voted to meet in person on the 22nd of November. And all boards and commissions after that date are going in person in the council chamber. So just be aware of that if you're in the public. And then reach out to city clerk if you have any accommodations you need with regards to going back to in-person meetings starting in December for us on the commission. With that, I I don't have any other department items to report today, but I'm happy to answer any questions if there's anything briefly.
Thank you. Okay, so any reports by commissioners? Okay, not seeing any. And we we already went through the items received after the agenda was posted. We already addressed that one. So after that, then it's just an adjournment. Any other questions before we adjourn? Okay, so we'll adjourn the meeting then. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Record.